I'm calling the Tuesday, October 7th, 2025.
Press and hold till it turns green, Russell.
Where?
Uh, too long.
There you go. That's right.
Calling the Tuesday, October 7th, 2025, meeting of the Easton Medical Planning Board. Order. Roll call will be, let's try to decide. Rob?
Robert Terrell.
Cassandra Scherstol.
Russell Denver.
Phil Fonseca.
Pete Henderson.
Rob Wachilla, Director of Planning.
All right, I'm required to ask if there's anyone in the audience who might be recording this meeting. If so, please state your name and the method you're recording the meeting.
Raymond Cattuno, real-time court reporting, and I'm stenographically recording.
Sarah Hena didn't remind your publishing audio.
Thank you. Um, first order is the approval of the meeting minutes of September 3rd, 2025. Have a motion to approve.
Go move.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, so that passes, and then the meeting minutes of September 16th, 2025, do have a motion to accept.
Go move.
Second. Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes.
I'll abstain.
One of two abstentions. Um, approval not required. Mr. Clerk.
Uh, A and R, oh, yep, okay. A and R dash 2025 dash 06, request to combine eight small parcels into one new parcel on the corner of Nelson and Cross Street. Such as parcel IDs 2C dash 45 dash 299 and 2C dash 44 dash 8, located in the residence district applicant. That's, sorry. Tedos, thank you. Perkowski, 1307 Tinkham Road, Wolverhampton, Mass. 01095.
Applicant here. Do you want to come up and tell the board what you're doing?
So my father's just trying to build an 1,800 square foot, single-family home with a two-car garage. Um, that's really it.
Okay. Rob, any concerns on your part?
No, so the only thing, just to notice that this street here, 12th Street, lead as a paper road, and Nelson Street is where the front of the buildings can be facing. But because it's on off-street, which technically is a town road, even though it's not built, it has two streets that fronts on. Other than that, the lot does conform to our zoning.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, do have a motion to endorse the plan?
Come on.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, say nay. None, that matter passes.
Thank you.
So we need to take a little recess until Mr. Pill's traffic engineer comes.
He's here.
Okay.
I'm hoping this now refer, maybe a couple of minutes. I did promise that we will provide a.
Okay, so he's got a couple of minutes before we get to him then.
Thank you.
Okay. So.
For your courtesy.
Sure. So, um, Mr. Clerk, do you want to read?
Yep. Case site dash 2025 dash 03, request for site plan review approval to construct four manufacturing warehouse, commercial build, manufacturing warehousing, commercial buildings. My total footprint of 455,936 square feet with 398 parking spaces at 330 Chestnut Street. Such as parcel ID 18 dash 38 dash 0, located in the industrial garden park zoning district. Applicant Vincent Fashio, you know, the 1260 Stelton Road, Piscataqua, New Jersey, 08854. I have it, aye.
So, um, do I have a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No one oppose, say nay. Hearing none. So I thought what we do is, um, there were questions asked by the board, and there were questions asked by the people on the, or the residents in the audience at our last meeting. So, uh, they were directed primarily to the petitioner, so we're going to want to hear what their responses are. I'd like to ask a couple of questions of Mr. Wachilla, the planning director, to kind of get us going. And then, um, the representative from the fields of, uh, fields of Chestnuts, uh, has brought in a traffic engineer. So we'd like to hear what they have to say. And then if there are still individuals who wish to, um, speak on this matter, certainly we will entertain you at that time. Um, so first I'd like to just ask Mr. Wachilla to, uh, let the audience know what happened since we last met. Rob?
Sure. So basically what happened, uh, we asked the applicant to make a series of changes to their plans and requested updated materials specifically focusing on traffic and pedestrian safety around traffic. So they have since worked on that, made those updates, and has sent us updated materials, including a new set of site plans, which were dated October 1st. So very recent. They sent us a list of all the changes they made, which I'm sure they'll go into during their presentation, uh, later in the meeting. Also sent us a truck turning diagram, shows the routes and turns from all possible angles on the road. Every direction, left and right, that a big truck can make. And, um, I'll let the engineer describe the results of that plan as well. Um, and they have also submitted a, uh, draft agreement, uh, and I'll let the applicants go further into what that agreement is. Uh, entering an agreement with the town in terms of contributing funds for traffic and pedestrian improvements along Chestnut Street and the intersection of Chestnut Street and Shaker Road. Um, of course, I'm not going to speak too much on that. That's up to the applicants and.
Here we are now.
So Rob, can just serve people's education. So when a application like this, certainly the size of this project comes in, what steps does the planning department take after they receive this?
Sure. So basically, we expect the applicant to give us everything that's required upfront, which includes a set of plans, uh, project narrative, uh, and everything else that people apply for all applications for the planning boards. And usually what I do is I look at the, um, site plans to make sure they conform to our zoning. That's the first step. There's anything that's missing, which during this review process, I have talked to the applicant a few times. It made those edits. And once they conform to the zoning, then they can go ahead and submit the application. And during that period, other town departments, including the police department, the fire department, who both did not provide any comments for against, actually, the police department said they were for this petition. Um, DPW Health Department and pretty much everybody else, building department, um, they all have a chance to weigh in on the project. And so far, the comments we received from those departments, Mr. Chair, have been very minimal. Uh, the only one that I'm aware of, they just, they have to go with the conservation commission after they're done with the planning board. That's a whole nother public hearing they have to do after this one concludes. Uh, then once that's done, we set up a hearing date and they come before the board and make their pitch.
Um, so Mr. Pill had requested all of the original documentation that had been submitted by the petitioner. When did you provide those to Mr. Pill?
So I was given a flash drive from Mr. Lebeck at the last meeting with all of his presentation materials. As soon as he gave me those materials, it became public documents. Uh, Mr. Pill requested those documents that were used during the hearing. And I provided a flash drive with those documents onto Mr. Pill.
And then when was that done?
That was done, uh, the day after the hearing, last hearing.
Mr. Pill, it's not time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, as I indicated, so, uh, for the petitioner.
Good evening. Rob Leback from our Leback Associates, here this evening with Jason Adams from Bowman, um, Joe Marino, the project proponent, and Rachel Fancy from Fitzgerald Law. We're here this evening based on a continuance away from the last public hearing. We have, as Mr. Wachilla had mentioned, addressed a number of items that I believe we'll go through briefly, if it pleases the chair and the board. Um, and then I will turn it over to Mr. Adams. We'll also go through some of the details of what we provided, um, and have addressed. Um, Attorney Fancy is here as well, um, and can answer any questions related to the proposed agreement and whatnot. Um, if that pleases the chair, I'll.
So Rob, if you could hear our slide.
Can you folks hear me? Thank you.
And I'd like to just make out any changes as you're going through this, if there's any. First hearing to now, if people can put that in a text.
Absolutely. So the very first slide that I have are site design changes since the last meeting. They're pretty basic, straightforward, generally don't change the character of the plan. Um, as requested by the proponent, we added sound barrier walls to the edge of each of the buildings. This is something they've done in other locations, very successful, um, with the concerns that have been raised. We wanted to make sure we're mitigating sound as much as possible, as you have seen from the previous plan, which I'll also show here. And Rob, thank you. No need to come around. I'm just kind of hopping around. I'll use this. So we've oriented everything to the center of the site, buildings acting as barriers on the edge of each of the buildings. We've added sound barrier walls that will help with that, but that was one of the minor changes that we made. There was also some questions related to the parking calculations. The building before had a square footage number that was transcribed. Um, so we've updated the required parking and the parking calculations. So if you go to, um, next sheet, don't mind, the next slide. That slide shows actually the sound barrier walls, and then if we go to the very next one. We've updated on our plan. Um, we have on the review sheet, we've updated all the numbers so that everything corresponds. There was a minor number that affected the parking calculation as far as requirements. That's been updated and reflected in that, uh, as well as our left.
You go back to the. So can you highlight where they are?
Like right here.
Okay, how tall are they?
They're consistent with the walls of the building, so they're the height of the building.
Okay. And so they're just on.
Well, they're in the area of the, um, the loading itself. So where the, the, um, tractor trailer trucks, the trailers would be backed up to the loading docks. They're, they're protecting that area, so the area of any sort of activity.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So, um, we have the site design, I'm sorry, the site updates. There's also minor, um, minor updates to the curb cuts. Each of the curb cuts into the site were revised ever so slightly. Uh, when we were working on the truck turning movements with Bowman, we noticed a couple radii that changed. But the radii on the way in got adjusted ever so slightly, but just that minor modification to the plan. And then in addition, when we were reviewing our plans internally, we have a retaining wall that, um, is over 30 inches in height, and we won't need a fence on it, so we added that fence. That would be updated in the construction set regardless, but we wanted to make sure it was reflected in the plan.
So then, what's, what's the height of the fence?
The six-foot height. If it's okay with the chair, I'll turn it over to Mr. Adams.
Are you going to go through the traffic counts, the updated traffic counts?
Yeah, I can. I'll, um, rather Jason Adams. Um, we got a couple of slides too, Rob, if those are on there. Just to give an update, then happy to go through it to as much detail as you'd like. Um, the, the big change since last meeting is that we heard a lot from the board and the members of the public about the need to, uh, produce improvements in the vicinity of the site to both improve existing conditions as well as uh, offset any of the impacts of the project. So we have submitted an improvement package. Um, I'll walk through that briefly on the next slide, but overall, we had already committed to pavement markings, or sorry, pavement monitoring and improvements as needed in the vicinity of the site drive. Um, and we are now bringing forward an improvement at the intersection of Chestnut Street and Shaker Road, as well as at the Redstone Rail Trail, um, crossing, uh, great facilities there. Uh, we're also in receipt of the, uh, peer review letter produced by the Butters Traffic Engineer, who I believe is here tonight. Uh, I'll just touch on that briefly. I know they're going to make their own presentation. Don't need to, uh, waste any of the board's time, but happy to interact in that space as well. Uh, Rob, if you could go to the next slide. Uh, so this is just a, uh, concept overview of improvements at the Chestnut Street, Shaker Road intersection. Essentially, what we would be looking to do is add a new eastbound right turn lane, so the movement from the project site, um, moving towards Shaker Road, allowing for better movement, uh, turning right head south, um, Shaker Road as part of this. Uh, all of the, uh, intersection corners, radii would be improved. Um, right now, I know we showed last, last meeting, we showed video of, of heavy vehicles making those turns today. We understand there are still some concerns that are being raised, but as, yeah, this is an opportunity for the town in concert with our project team to improve those radii and make sure that the WB67s can safely turn in and out. That's of utmost concern for us as well. We, we need to have that operate for our, our project as well as what's already out there today. Um, so we'd be working through that, and then I know one of the comments that was raised, and we're very in favor of this, was upgrading the existing rectangular rapid flashing beacon, the flashing lights there across into the Redstone Rail Trail to provide passive detection so that someone doesn't need to press a button in order to activate the lights. Uh, we can upgrade the, the system to recognize when someone is present, a pedestrian or bicyclist, to activate those lights to, to give better visibility. Uh, then next slide, if you could. So just a couple of quick points from our perspective on the comment letter received, uh, on Friday. Uh, one of the big talking points was the trip generation that was used. I know this was a big conversation point of the last hearing as well. Um, the, uh, Butters Traffic Engineer has correctly pointed out that there is new trip generation data. So when we had submitted our study, uh, we were using the latest available trip generation data. Since that time, there is a new, a new addition of the Institute of Transportation Engineers. So there, there is more data available. They have presented out the idea of updating some of the trip generation that we had provided. Um, I, I think that's different ways you can both select a land use code. I know we talked about this a little bit last time between warehousing and some of the other industrial uses. Um, but the, I think where the end result of this goes, what is the contact project? Um, we feel that by submitting the, uh, level of improvement that we are now committing to, that we're offsetting project impact. So, uh, it becomes a little bit more of a moot point about what those specific numbers are. I mean, frankly, we don't know exactly how many vehicles are going to come to it from the site. We're doing our best job, uh, from an engineering perspective to estimate that and to give a reasonable, um, direction by the board in terms of what the expected project impact is going to be. So if those numbers were to change a little bit, up or down, um, overall, what we're trying to do is just offer the greater, um, overview of the intersection system. Yeah, I, I think that's probably pretty good from, from our perspective.
Well. I, I know some people have been focused on numbers. So I thought there was discrepancy in projected number of tractor-trailer trips. I think you originally had 195 to 200. There was a, a number that was unsure about number of loading docks and the number of employee parking. So do you have an estimated definitive number of possible three things? Uh, Rob, do you want to talk to them? Spaces.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a number of those items on the updated, um, plans and the divisions that I have been provided on, October 1st. Um, the first one I will go through is the parking spaces. We have 365 parking spaces. We have 106 loading dock space spaces, and then we have trailer parking for 138.
Is that? That's it. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Um, questions from the board? Maybe at the moment. You can ask. I can ask you a question. So doing my homework over the weekend, I drove by Carta Monday, which is on Shaker Road. And from Shaker Road, you look into Carta Monday, and you see a whole row of loading docks. And there might have been 30 tractor-trailers parked in front of the loading docks with none of the doors being opened. So what would be, I mean, is it part of the industry that people go unload the vehicle, unload the tractor-trailer, and it sits there? Is that in any way related to why you need 138 loading docks? And then I guess the question, I'll go, hey. So, and this is just me, a layperson, asking these questions. So. You know, I think of, so let's just think of Carta Monday. They used to run three shifts. They might have had 600 parking spots for their employees, and they had 300 people come to work at 7:00 a.m. And then 300 people come to work at, and then 300 people coming at 3:00 p.m. Obviously can't park where the people who came in at 7:00 a.m. are. And is that the rationale why you have, why a site like this would need so many parking spots?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, um, the shift change, the potential for people on each shift to overlap is a reason for the need for the parking. Um, as far as the logistical component of each of the businesses, obviously there's variability. It's a multi-variable analysis. However, um, there would be the opportunity for them to have an empty trailer, multiple empty trailers. We see that in different distribution centers that, um, there's often a logistical component where they'll actually have a yard truck move trailers, not in this particular, obviously, but, uh, they'll have a yard truck move trailers offsite and store them empty until they can be picked up. So there's all different types of logistical, uh, that can be dealt with, with the number of spaces storage, as well as obviously the overflow between two shifts for parking passengers. Uh, I think you're assessing correct.
So, uh, questions from the board?
I, so I, I will, yeah, yeah, thank you. So today I, I was oddly enough, uh, it was part of this southbound turn. Uh, I was sitting in the left-hand turn lane, heading to the gas station, leaving the post office, and a full-size tractor-trailer, whatever you call those, uh, came at me, and I had to pull forward because it couldn't get around me. Uh, I know you're going to modify that, and I appreciate that. I, I'm wondering how much is this going to add? Because it wasn't even close. He, he went fully into the left-turn lane only and was able to swing it. Um, so when I got to the gas station, I stopped and watched, and I saw many others swing it just fine, but the full-size one, it wasn't even close. So that's, I guess that's my main concern is heading southbound, what's going to happen to that corner?
Right, and, and so there's, there's two pieces to this one. One is a widening to add an, an additional lane, so that's a typically about a 12-foot widening with associated shoulder. Uh, the second part of that is the radius of the intersection would be adjusted. So, you know, the, the WB67 is now the, the standard design vehicle, especially in an area like this. It's definitely have to do with, you know, an industrial project like ours. Um, when this intersection was originally designed, it was probably a smaller vehicle was the design vehicle, and I think that's why there are some tight movements for a WB67, um, a WB62 or something that's smaller typically can make those turn. But some of the larger vehicles have a little bit of trouble, and, and that's why we see this as overall improvement. So it, it would be a combination of, of widening the roadway, there'd be more pavement on the approach, as well as adjusting the radius to make that, make sure that vehicle can get around safely, as well as from other approaches too. It's not, even though the widening would be the, the right turn lane, there would be other modifications at the corners of the intersection to accommodate those vehicles.
Okay, so when they are, they are coming into that, you know, residential house now, and it is going to 12 feet on this, uh, on Chestnut, and then they're going to turn, at least shave off some of that corner at least, right? So it is going to get larger, or not just reconfiguring.
Correct, yes. Uh, you will, I mean, if you can see in there, it's kind of hard to see. There's a little, yeah, red line that follows out the town layout. So on each of the corners of the intersection, there is available public right-of-way to accommodate such a movement. So it, it will adjust some of how the existing properties are weighed out, but not within their own right-of-way. So that their improvement, as best we can tell at this stage, certainly there'd be more engineering that would go into this. Um, the, the improvement, we feel, will be dominated within the available public right-of-way.
All right, and the last piece on this, so I, I know this was brought up last meeting, but you know, typically this is coming, imagine where people are going to end up coming based off of navigation, right? They don't just read maps anymore. So this would be your Connecticut-bound, New York-bound, Southern-bound way coming this way.
Correct.
Presumably, there could be coming from Boston and north and west as well, and they would come from different routes. I know the Long Meadow intersection was the question, and then how people are going to come through the Mass Bike, right? Because I think everyone's concern is coming through the rotary, right? Something that, you know, can't even make the turn is going to navigate that nightmare. So, um, was, was there any other thought put into the other two sections and how people would come in on those routes?
Uh, I mean, generally, we've been trying to understand exactly, you know, as best we can within engineering judgment, where vehicles would be expected to come, come from, go to, and make sure that those can be done safely. Um, I, I think that to the point of how people are going to get through the rotary, and, uh, certainly there are going to be wayfinding use. I mean, I think everybody knows that at least during peak periods, not all times of day, you're trying to avoid that, you know. So truckers are going to be doing the same when you plug it into your GPS. It's, it's very unlikely that you're going to have an option to go through that rotary. It's going to, I mean, there's a number of ways to get, get to and from the site. Um, we, we don't expect there's going to be much truck traffic, especially not during peak hours that are going up and down, uh, from the north side of Shaker Road.
Okay. All right, done?
Yeah.
Done.
It's on, it's on YouTube.
Also, by, uh, working on the radius, uh, when you're exiting onto Chestnut Street and heading east on Chestnut Street, without allow the truck to be completely contained in a right-hand lane.
Are you, when, when exiting the project site?
Yes, exiting the project site, by working on that radius.
Correct.
We mean, what will happen, because it's going to happen, when trucks come south on, uh, Shaker Road from the center of town, and we know that's going to happen. Um, that, that the turn, taking a right-hand turn and heading down to the project, is, is there a possibility of putting a different radius in that corner also where the Shell Station is?
Have to signalize the intersection. Have, have to signalize the intersection, like the Shaker turn onto Chestnut you're talking about? Yeah, we would expect that as part of that improvement, we'd look at all four corners to adjust, to adjust the radio.
Hopefully, you won't have to do the, the Chestnut Street corner, because that's not a viable way of getting in and out of there in the wintertime. That is pretty, pretty dangerous.
Thank you.
So, just for the layperson, and we, we're asking a lot of questions. But we know as a matter of fact that not everyone reviews all the materials before they come to this meeting. So we try to get as much information out as possible. So I'm a little flummoxed on expanding the radii, if I said that correctly. So is there a caking of property occurring?
Uh, no, all of, all of the corners of that intersection are covered by public right-of-way. So it's, it's land owned by the town, and essentially it's set aside for the use of the public way. So if you were to add a sidewalk, add a, whatever you wanted to do, there's, and then we're, we're showing it on them. And again, it's just, it's a small red line. We would go through this whole exercise, but. But there's not any property needed from any of the private properties at any of the corners. It's, it's land already owned by the town.
And so what is the width that is, I'm not added to the pavement in the intersection?
Uh, so, so essentially, you're talking about how wide at its widest point.
So how much more concrete or pavement are you adding to take a right-hand turn from Chestnut onto Shaker to go down to Enfield?
Probably about 12 to 14 feet.
Oh.
Boy, they own, the town owns.
As, as, as a living, uh, that, I mean, that's a typical.
So it's a whole new lane.
It's a whole new lane.
Correct.
That fits within the public right-of-way.
Okay.
Russ? I think that the town owns 12 feet in anyway.
All right. Um, other questions from the board? Mr. Pill, the floor is yours.
Oh, okay, sorry, all right.
Just because I foresee it coming up, um, for the record, I mean, Rachel Fancy with Fitzgerald Law, uh, here on behalf of the applicant. As the board will see and anyone who reviewed the submitted materials, there was a draft agreement which was submitted, which is modeled after a previous draft agreement that was submitted with the prior one, but it is different. This draft agreement seeks to essentially remove the ability to, or the requirement, not ability, to test for traffic flow essentially. So rather than making it conditioned on certain metric being met for the fund to be provided, pre-developers is just providing that fund to the town and stating, make the improvements, let's do it now. It'll be for the betterment of the site, it'll be for the betterment of the town. And that fund includes both the widening, some additions on the actual infrastructure that Jason touched on, as well as improvements to the Shaker intersection, or not the intersection, the rail trail. And we're sort of putting it in the town's perspective of what they think is best. It's not what private developer thinks is best, what does the town think is the best way to do this? We provided plans and suggestions and we are more than happy to do that should the town want it, which is why that's in a draft format. But we also realize this is going to impact the town as a whole. We want the town to have that wherewithal to make those decisions. Again, we feel that the plans we have submitted sufficiently address that and will fulfill all needs that are desired. But to the fullest extent, I would think it is in the best wishes of the town for them to have that option. But again, committed in a draft that they would like to pass it back to us, we are more than happy to do those improvements ourselves. Figured it'd be best to put it in the town's hands and allow them to make the best decision, whether it's CPW, fire, police, whoever it may be, with in hand our recommendations from our traffic engineer. Any questions for that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, board members, for the record. My name's Rob Machado. I'm the managing principal of MDM Transportation in Massachusetts. I've been retained through Michael Pill's office to continue our review of this particular site. I've provided testimony to this board on prior application. Our commentary incorporated by reference into what we've submitted to the board. We've had an opportunity to look at what has been recently submitted and documented in the the twenty-five traffic report that's all gathered together. Commentary very much runs in line with our original comments and they really focus on two aspects of the project. And that is how the project is being characterized in terms of its potential tendency, traffic that might be generated by what variety of different, that's really. Secondly, the maneuverability of the types of vehicles that are likely to use this site. And so we haven't reinvented the wheel in our commentary. I will acknowledge that Bowman had mentioned and counsel has mentioned that the draft agreement, so to speak, that attempts to update some of the mitigation commitments that were made in the prior application. Those were along the lines of mitigation that we had suggested would be appropriate to ensure that the project impacts are properly accounted for and addressed. I haven't had the chance to look at that draft agreement. I have not seen a conceptual improvement plan for the intersection, though I think the basis of our comments very much align with what they're now suggesting they will be willing to do, which is geometric improvements to Shaker Road and Chestnuts. We think that is appropriate to address existing known issues as well as the increase in intensity of use of that particular location. We're glad to take a closer look at that off the record. So, secondly, the impact of the project generally. As Adams had pointed out, there's been updates to standards that are typically applied to projects like this. And the underlying issue that we've identified is that, and this applies equally to my firm and how we approach these types of projects, many of these projects for developers, UPS, Amazon, et cetera, is that we always look at the highest, best potential use or occupancy of a site to understand what its potential high-side impact might be. This could be a warehouse, it could be a light industrial facility, it could be a mini fulfillment center or a series of those. Our firm has a lot of experience with, in particular, fulfillment centers. Mini fulfillment centers are a fairly new type of fulfillment center. They're much smaller than what you would think of as a big Amazon plant or UPS facility. They tend to be one hundred and fifty to one hundred and seventy thousand square feet. Their shifts run much differently than what was discussed earlier in terms of the traditional seven-to-three type shift. Many fulfillment centers, one of which we worked on and is now operational and that we've had the opportunity to actually count after the fact, now that it's fully operational, is one hundred and seventy thousand square feet. It's got four-hour civilian driver shifts, they call them. Very high generator, surprisingly high, you know, on the order of just under two hundred vehicle trips during peak hours, twenty-eight hundred trips over the course of an entire day for a facility that is far smaller than a great one this year. That said, we've suggested, what we've done in our review is apply what believe to be a more appropriate standard for it varies from what has been submitted by the applicant in two ways. One is that there are more trips associated with the, with the use. And the directional inbound versus outbound splits look much different than what a traditional warehouse or industrial use might be thought of. The trips tend to be more balanced inbound and outbound. So what we've suggested in our commentary is that the applicant take that updated information into account and ensure that whatever they may be contemplating for improvements account for that higher potential impact. You know, our commentary is not meant to derail a project or oppose a project. It's, it's being provided on the basis of what standards we hold to ourselves as a company that work in the Commonwealth and based on our recent and ongoing with exactly this type of facility. It's coming on, they get it right, they don't want it to fail or work correctly. But obviously, from a community perspective, you want to make sure that it works well. So there's mutual perspective here, making sure that this is analyzed correctly and that the mitigation that's put forth is appropriate and in context with, with the project. That's the upshot of what we've got. I've got, you know, a half an inch thick document here, I'm not going to go through in detail on this. I would suggest to the board that the applicant at some point in its assessment, conduct at least what we would call a sensitivity analysis to look at the higher generating potential and the newer standards. Look at the analysis one more time, make sure that what they're proposing to do will actually offset the impact of the project and accommodate the types of vehicles WB sixty-seven in particular that contemplated. You know, I, I think even in videos and, and some of the observations of truck activity at Shaker and Chestnut, it's finally apparent that those types of improvements are needed. So with that, I am glad to answer any questions the board might have. But all of our comments are in black and white and are memo of October third. And I'll be here for any questions you might have. Thank you.
So I'll ask a question. So with the proposed changes to the intersection, do you believe in your professional opinion that that improves? You know, there's a rating, I guess, from A through F of the intersection. And I think they had indicated last time it would go from a C to a D. Does the improvements that are being proposed change that rating?
Yeah, to clarify, the overall intersection operation might be a letter of service, a level of service C or D or thereabouts. There are individual movements within the intersection that are failing or will fail, even with modest traffic increases. The left turn lanes in particular are subject to long queues during peak hours. I have not seen an analysis by the developer that would indicate what those levels of service change to with the geometric enhancements, the additional lane that they mentioned, they would be willing to implement. However, adding lanes generally adds capacity. And they have committed to a retiming of the intersection, which could address some of the issues, at least some of the additional delays or trips that are being generated through the intersection. So what I would say is that there's, there's a high possibility that with additional lanes and retiming that the intersection or the impacts associated with the project may be offset at least. It may not entirely address every queuing issue within the intersection. It may not necessarily completely eliminate delays to a point where every approach works at a, what we call a D or better, an acceptable standard. But certainly the types of mitigation that they've just mentioned, which we suggested and recommended in prior reviews, is likely to be appropriate.
So the other thing I've had some difficulty conceptualizing is they indicate that so many vehicles are going to come from Long Meadow. So many vehicles are going to come from Connecticut. And then when they leave the site, so many will go past, you know, go down to Long Meadow and so many will go up to Shaker Road. How is something like that developed? And use lay terms if you can.
Yeah, sure. So there are two aspects, employees who are going to come into, to and from the facility. Those distributions are typically based on census data. There's a category of data that is called journey to work data that would indicate for folks who live in East Long Meadow where they work. And, and based on that type of information, you can make educated estimates of what portion, what number of trips might be drawn from various communities and which routes are most likely to be used to get to or from the facility. So there's the employee distribution, that's usually census-based. To some degree, you look at existing travel patterns to justify some of that. And secondly, the truck-related trips. And that is very much dependent on who the tenant is of the facility. In the case of a mini fulfillment center, you've got a combination of what are known as civilian drivers, who usually use their own personal vehicle to load Amazon packages, for instance, to deliver to, to folks. Some of those vehicles may be larger box truck-type vehicles. And then there's the tractor-trailer vehicles. And the tractor-trailers usually have an origin point from a regional distribution center to a smaller facility like this. So it depends on where the regional distribution centers are located and which routes most efficiently serve the locus. So the truck trips are a bit trickier to estimate. It depends very much on who the tenant is, where their distribution facilities are, where their customers are located. There may be local deliveries that are being made by tractor-trailers that do necessarily rely on local streets as opposed to interstates. So a lot of that is variable. What we've suggested in our commentary is a post-occupancy monitoring program. It's common to these types of projects. We had to do it for Amazon in Westboro, the mini fulfillment center. We do these, we're now building a UPS facility in Shrewsbury. We're going to be subject to monitoring there, not only for vehicle trips, for passenger cars, but trucks. And that post-occupancy measure, if you will, validates whatever was estimated in this process. And if it's vastly different, materially different, then there's usually a provision that allows the town another bite at the apple, so to speak, to work with the developer to address unforeseen issues that were not incorporated. Right, so if thirty percent of the truck traffic's coming through five corners or, you know, around about, that's not foreseen, but it does happen, that type of monitoring would ultimately result in another view of what might be done. Would be a management action that is applied to the project that specifically and expressly requires the tenant to advise truckers, you know, deliveries not to use specific routes, et cetera. Right, so, but monitoring is an important component in some.
If the board will allow me, I have a couple more questions, please.
Right ahead.
Sure. So last Tuesday evening, there was a presentation at the senior center. And my apologies that we're not at the senior center, we got booted by a dance club that needed the.
Needed it.
So, sorry, Russ. What was the name of the presenter, Rob, do you remember?
Jeff Speck, Speck Dempsey, he's an urban designer.
Yeah, and so he was, he was hired by the town to do a study on essentially how to make the rotary more walkable. And a resident there, resident at the meeting, raised the question, well, what do we do if we put in a warehouse project on Chestnut Street and truck traffic? And his comments, and please correct me if I don't get this correctly, was essentially that tractor-trailers are not a detriment to going around the rotary with respect to traffic accidents. Because if they come to a stop, their, their ability to get into gear, to get around the rotary is limited to any, to gaining any speed, to do any damage. Would you care to elaborate on that?
Well, I, I wouldn't agree that there's.
Did I get that right? Did that ring a bell, what he said? Okay, okay, all right, close enough, okay.
Aspects of traffic safety that I would be concerned with. You know, I, I've been asked and have testified regularly to the safety aspects of travel in and around certain intersections, roundabouts, et cetera. I do a lot of land court type cases. I've been asked to, most recently yesterday, to be a participant and expert witness in a, in a fatal crash. It involves a bicyclist and a truck in Cambridge, another one in Somerville. So as it relates to these larger vehicle types, the visibility or lack thereof from the driver's eye position to a pedestrian, a bicyclist, or even sometimes another vehicle is somewhat difficult at best, depending on how they're trying to navigate an intersection. You might be familiar with a case involving one of the duck boats in Boston, you know, causing a fatality. And the cause of that fatality was the lack of visibility from the driver's position to be able to see, you know, pedestrian, who is adjacent to the vehicle. So, you know, it may not be so much a capacity issue, so to speak, but it very much is a consideration for pedestrian and bicycle safety. And that's something you'd have to take up very hard.
My last question, at least for now. So if you leave the project site at three-thirty and you take a left going back toward Long Meadow and you drive along the fields of Chestnut, there appears to, well, there is a rather large mound that separates the street from the residential properties. Why is that built and what is the purpose of that?
I, I can't speak the exact purpose, but I, I've got to believe that it's one for privacy. This is the berm in front of the entire development you're talking about, yeah. My guess is that it, it shields the site visually from the street so that you feel more encased, if you will, within a community as opposed to feeling like you live on a busy road. And, you know, I'm familiar with that site. I, I believe that as you're leaving the site, the berms are positioned in such a way that it does not impair your built seating. So it's probably, and potentially for, for noise, frankly. So it, it has a noise dampening effect, it's, you know, sent those sounds into an embankment or, or higher.
Thank you. Questions? The floor is open, whoever would like to be heard on this matter. Mr. Pill?
Thank you. When we submitted our stuff on Friday, I made it a point to transmit everything directly to the applicant and Rob Wachilla let me, am I pronouncing it right?
Yeah.
Okay, with a name like Pill, really try to be careful. He informed me he did. We'd never received a copy of any of their most recent submissions and we would, and that's not Rob's fault, that was their job, by the way. And so, you know, I'm happy to go get them, are they on the website now? Okay, then certainly I will download them. I will forward all the traffic stuff to Mr. Michaud so that he can review it and prepare a further evaluation and report. I also will take a look at the proposed agreement. And I guess I have a question, I, I'm assuming those comments, of course, they would come to you, but I'm assuming they should also go to the town attorney, Jesse Belcher-Timmy at Dougherty Wallace.
Everything, everything through our director.
Okay, so I'll send everything to the planning board care of Rob. You know, I, I do recall last time there were some issues, both with the text of the agreement and the amount of money, the adequacy of the amount of money that was being offered. And so I want to take a look at that. And I also want to have Mr. Michaud. And I also want to have Mr. Michaud look at the agreement. And we would very much appreciate that opportunity. And um.
Absolutely.
Guess that's about it. And I I certainly hope that, you know, um, it sounds like we will get the opportunity to come back another another time. Okay.
Yeah.
Then I guess, but everybody else?
I I will be voting for, and I will be voting for continuance.
And I guess.
So, yes.
Respectfully request that the board.
Yeah.
Therize that to afford us the opportunity to do what I've discussed.
Absolutely.
And I hope you will do that. Thank you very much.
The floor is open. Whoever would like to be heard on this matter, please step forward. So just uh, for the people to remember the ground rules from last time. Okay, uh, courtesy, 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 respect for, respect for everyone.
Hi, my name is Tom Santolo. I live at fifty Fields Drive. I'd just like to add something to the discussion about the reconfiguration, the rotary.
What? There, there's, there's no plan to redo the rotary as of now.
Understand.
Okay.
I understand that. I was at that meeting on Tuesday.
Okay.
Just like to add some additional comment.
Yeah.
That um, the the trucks negotiating the rotary would potentially not be a problem. But what was not addressed was the movement of the trucks on the reconfigured streets. In particular, shake the dog leg from Shaker Road.
Yep.
To Maple. Because it looked to me as though there was not enough turning radius, nor was there enough space for those, for that traffic.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anne Kellner, forty-seven Fields Drive. I just had a couple of questions. The um, traffic study seems to always be from Chestnut onto Shaker and nothing coming from Benton Road onto Chestnut. And like Mr. Ralph said, uh, we've seen trucks that can't make that turn. And there doesn't seem to be a lot of giving way that they could expand that issue. My other question is, is no one seems to be talking about the commuter traffic that was going for people that are going to be working there. If they have three hundred and eighty or whatever it is, parking spaces, people are going to be coming down Chestnut. And right now, it's sometimes it's very difficult for people from Holly Drive, Marshall Street, as well as the Fields, to come on to make a turn onto Chestnut. If we're going to be adding, even if we say two hundred people a day, two or three times a day, is there going to be some other provision made? Stoplights there or how can we afford that? And it doesn't seem to be anybody's addressing the commuter traffic. I mean, the truck traffic is certainly something we need to do, but I was also wondering about the commuter traffic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
John Power, seventeen Broadleaf. So it was discussed at length about reconfiguring the intersection of Chestnut and Shaker Road. It was asked, and I don't believe it was fully answered, about the intersection of Chestnut Street and Benton Drive Dwight Road. My question is, has a study been done to look at turning radiuses there? Because I have seen instances myself where in order for a truck, a BMW sixty-seven, coming from Long Meadow, Converse Street, make a left turn onto Chestnut Street, have to make it from the right travel lane, not from the left turn lane. So I'm just thinking that there's more mitigation that potentially needs to be done. And I don't know if it's been looked at. It's the only point I want to make.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jack Warren. I'm at thirteen Fields Drive. I'm the current president of the Board of Trustees for the Fields. Um, I have made numerous trips from Boston to the Fields for personal reasons. And every time I plug in my trip home, it takes me down Route eighty-four through Stafford Springs and up eighty-three to make that right turn, left turn onto Chestnut. And there's no way any tractor trailer can make that turn safely. Yes, we studied Shaker and Chestnut very carefully. As mentioned, we haven't studied Benton and Chestnut. We haven't studied the effects on Chestnut Street going all the way up through eighty-three. We have a very bad intersection at Chestnut and Prospect. No, nobody's talked about that. The traffic studies are incomplete. We have to have all the intersections. They're going to be affected, looked at, and evaluated. Anything less than that, we're going to see a large number of accidents. And we know a tractor trailer versus a vehicle, a car vehicle. The car vehicle, the other, the passenger vehicle is going to be a mess. We're going to see increased insurance rates for auto and property damage. So I think we have to consider how this is going to affect the lives of every resident of East Long Meadow. It's going to have a negative effect for everybody. Thank you.
So I'm going to ask both traffic engineers, what were the accident counts for Shaker and Chestnut?
Think that one's best answered by Mr. Adams. Um, copy of his traffic report with me.
We can get the answer. We'll get it right now for you. And here's a really difficult thing. I I believe Mr. Michaud mentioned. You don't really know where the traffic's going to go when it leaves the property. You don't know how much traffic there's going to be on any given day. There could be very little, could be a lot. And so these are estimates based upon professional standards that they rely on.
Uh, so you're asking about.
Actually.
Chestnut, yeah, a number of crashes, so.
And if you have it at Benton and Chestnut too.
Chestnut.
Summers and Chestnut.
Summers and Chestnut, yeah. So Shaker and Chestnut, uh, so we're looking at the most recent five years of available mass DOT data, which is twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one, just for framework. Uh, in those five years, there were twenty-six reported crashes at that signalized intersection. Uh, that results in a crash rate of zero point six two crashes per million entering vehicles. I know that's a lot of words, but essentially it's the way that we can determine how that intersection rates compared to other intersections in the state of Massachusetts.
Um, and does that break down car on car, car on truck?
Uh, we don't have that level of detail. Um, but but overall, the zero point six two is is lower than the uh, mass DOT statewide average of zero point seven eight crashes or the mass DOT District Two out here, specific to this area, of zero point eight nine. That's essentially indicating the crash rate at that signalized intersection is lower than an average signalized intersection.
And do you have any other major intersections in, like, within a mile of that site?
Uh, so we we did look at it, and if you wanted me to talk about Chestnut and White Benton. Uh, just as I said, that has come up. In that same five-year period, there were sixteen crashes reported, which results in a crash rate of zero point four eight, but lower than Shaker and Chestnut. And again, lower than both the mass DOT state average, as well as the mass DOT District Two average.
Mr. Michaud, anything you want to add?
I I would say the only location that they've documented in their traffic report that has an above-average crash rate, Dwight, Maple, and William Street intersection, um, that has a crash rate that is probably higher than average. Um, so I I think, um, clearly there are going to be locations that, you know, could probably.
Need a looking at.
Be candidates at safety countermeasures. Yeah, and I think the the types of improvements that are being suggested for at least the nearest major intersection are appropriate and and to some degree might actually address some of those crash statistics.
Thank you.
Excuse me. So how do you figure in an inch an hour of snow and a tractor trailer coming down Chestnut Hill to the intersection of Shaker and Chestnut? And how do you figure traffic flow when a tractor trailer is trying to go up Chestnut Street to get back to eighty-four, trying to make a right-hand turn onto onto Summers Road and go south on Summers Road? I mean, it's a nightmare. Like, the cars get stuck on the hill. So how do you figure in what's going to happen when tractor trailers try to go up the hill?
I understand. I, you know, I I don't have an answer for that, frankly. Um, the the roadway characteristics that you're mentioning are challenging for sure. Roadway grades and snow or wet conditions are absolutely a factor. Um, you know, I think in the context of what applicant has studied, um, you know, those are certainly considerations, that the principal impact of the project, um, you know, has been documented, but for higher level of trip activity.
Okay.
And so I think it's important that you point these out. That can still be a concern.
Having owned and driven oil trucks, I've come down Shaker, I've come down Chestnut Street with my right-hand tire and the right-hand rear rear tire in the snowbank to make sure I can stop. It's a nightmare.
I'm sure it's.
These are the things I think of.
Hi. Hi, Bill Rinaldi, eighteen Lyric Ave. Uh, I hear a lot of talk about the the site design and traffic patterns and such, but nobody's mentioned the positives of bringing jobs to the town, bringing an increase of tax revenue to our town, which we desperately need. Taxes in our town have gone, are going to be going up after the school uh, override kicks in. And I think this is a perfect opportunity to introduce a new tax flow to our town to help lessen that impact on citizens.
Thank you.
My name's Roland Boldut, one ten Smith Avenue. Uh, when you're talking about the snowbank of going down Chestnut, the vehicle you were driving doesn't articulate, doesn't bend. Imagine.
Ten-wheeler. Ten-wheeler.
And also, you're talking about using the right of way coming from Chestnut to Shaker Road. From what I understand, I'm not a town engineer. And the right of ways are usually used for gas lines, plumbing, sewers, many other things. That's why they save that space on the roadways is why you want. Uh, if you use every inch of that right of way, what is left for right of way? That person's porch? And when a driver makes a mistake and goes up on the curb, how close? I don't know the distance. It's twenty-five feet to of where your structure can be. Are we going to use that to this person's front porch? So when their kids come out of the house? Well, I mean, it, to me, it's absurd to use that amount. Why didn't you say twelve? You're going to use that closer to that house. Uh, I'm wondering what the feasibility of that, of using that right of way before their lawyers get involved with the town as well. Uh, the other thing was, uh, coming in from the other directions. And I did do a little bit of homework on this. I did use Google Maps. Everybody uses it. Works very well. And that's a lot of what the GPS uses. There's also another system called Waze. And Waze, a lot of people are familiar with. They're quite enough that they purchased it years ago. They're using that as well. Uh, so no matter what you're using, Google is involved. So I used Google and I looked at Boston. I looked from Northampton, because we're coming from the north, and I looked from Hartford. And most of your traffic is coming in eighty-four to one ninety to eighty-three. And then you're going to turn onto Chestnut, where the church is. And everybody here has missed a turn on their GPS. Everybody here, if you follow GPS, get distracted, whatever it might be, and you go by your turn, the next way in is rotary. And as far as a traffic study, well, let's go back to coming in from the north. You're going to come through Long Meadow. Long Meadow, a couple of years ago, wanted the traffic studies because they wanted to see what was going to happen with that influx of vehicles coming through their town. So I'm just saying, be prepared to hear from Long Meadow. I would imagine when all these vehicles start coming through their town and coming from Benton onto Chestnut. And coming up from the south, you're going to come up Shaker Road. Everybody's going to come in, exit forty-eight, off of ninety-one, and run through that congested area and up Shaker Road. Now, that's not our concern. That's Connecticut. Well, they're going to come up and try to make the turn from that left lane. And when they go to make the turn, you basically have to rub the curb, if not go up on it, where the gas station is on Chestnut Street. So you don't invade the left-turning lane coming from Chestnut to turn left onto that Shaker Road. If a car overshoots that white line, you now have a problem. I run across this problem daily as a professional driver. Uh, the cars don't pay attention to the white line. So that's a scenario where you're almost on the curb to make the turn, and that's using the white lines. Uh, so a lot of traffic is going to come in from Chestnut, Benton. I would guess most of it's going to be Benton. Most of it's going to be Shaker Road. Like I said, the drivers that come in from Boston are across one ninety. And that's the way the GPS tells them to come in. Uh, as far as your engineer or the person that talked about putting sidewalks around the rotary. The one thing I do understand is the blind spots of a tractor trailer. I participate in a federal program called Share the Road. And that is showing students how to drive around large vehicles. Showing them where the blind spots are. And the blind spots are right behind you. Your mirror can see everything alongside you. But right alongside you, it's very hard to see. It takes three quarters of a second. Focus on the mirror on the driver's side, takes twice as long to focus on the mirror on the right side. The right side has a larger blind. We can park police cars around the tractor trailer, turn on the lights. Get, and a student gets in the driver's seat and sees the lights, but can't see the cars. It's something that a professional driver has to get used to. And it's something that we rely on is looking at our round mirrors, which takes even longer to focus on. So that said, when you're dealing with such large blind spots, we try to stay away from pedestrians the best we can. We try to stay away from pedestrians the best we can. We try to stay away from automobiles the best we can. Now, seventy-eight percent of all tractor trailer, large vehicle accidents are caused by automobiles. Now you want to interject, three hundred vehicles, tractor trailers, coming in and out of the facility. So the accident rate will go up. I'll guarantee your accident rate right now is higher than that study from twenty seventeen, twenty twenty-one. Remember, we were in a pandemic. And vehicle miles traveled from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty dropped four percent from over three trillion to two point eight trillion. So it dropped considerably nationally. So with those numbers, they're skewed because of the pandemic. Less people were on the roads and you still had that many accidents. So we need updated numbers on the accident rates as well.
Thank you.
Oh, one more thing. When you involve tractor trailers and kids on bikes, somebody said kids on bikes. I have a nightmare that sits in my head day in, day out, as I drive. It's something that happened in the nineties. Uh, I was not involved whatsoever. All I know is I heard of it. On Prospect Street in East Hartford, Connecticut, a child was riding to school. It was a grammar school not far. And he was riding his bicycle, and it was garbage day. His pedal hit the garbage and it threw him underneath the tires of a trailer. Driver never knew what happened. He got stopped and the child died. And it's a horrible, horrible thing. So, and driver had no, had, you know, nothing you could do about it. That road is now shut down to tractor trailers. How long before Chestnut Street, God forbid, has any accidents? And before the residents say, "Perfume"? And all of your tractor trailer. And all of your tractor trailer drivers that are coming in with the large vehicles, the sleeper units, the, this, the
Sixty-seven unit.
That they, they were talking about, WB sixty-seven? Those vehicles usually travel at night, and the other vehicles that come in that are the sixty-two to forty-eight footers, that's the LTL, it's less trailer load business. The trucking companies want out of business is yellow freight. Well, they come in and give you your stuff, day in, day out. But at night, the other vehicles travel. So there's going to be an influx of vehicles constantly, twenty-four hours a day.
Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard on this matter?
Good evening. I'm Jerry Siletta. I live at three eighty-five Chestnut Street. I've talked to the board before in public, so I just want to, I got a few questions. Will the traffic study being done by Mr. Pill's traffic guy be posted on the website?
Yes.
It's already, um. All the documents that are mentioned today are already on the website, were posted before this meeting.
Posted like the third or fourth, right?
Usually I do it that Friday before the meeting.
Yeah, well, that's the third of mine. Yeah, if you want to.
That's okay.
Right here.
As far as the traffic study that Bowman did, projected out for twenty thirty-five, all you could do is put percentages against the tractor, against the heavy truck traffic. Why didn't you project out numbers instead? Because you're going against a very small number of trips. So that's a question I have. Goes back to what the chair said, what's the actual numbers that can be generated by this warehouse? Because you're also projecting the number of passenger parking spaces, truck spaces, because it's going to be a warehouse. If there wasn't, you wouldn't be required to have as many on the site. Also, between the buildings, what would stop them to connect that?
They'd have to come back in for a site plan review, for a revision.
Can't just do it.
Just can't do it.
Yep. And that's all I have right now. I'm assuming you're going to do a continuance?
Yeah, so we'll ask them to put corresponding numbers on those percentages with your final draft or final report. Thank you.
And again, if you're cutting in a hundred and twenty-plus doors and you have a hundred and nine, a hundred and thirty-something queues for trailers, as a former processing, as processing and distribution manager, an electricity manager, you're going to use them. So if there's a hundred and twenty queues, you're probably going to turn those over if you're moving a lot of product. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Hi, Thompson Tolo, fifty Fields Drive. I have a question about the retaining wall. How close is that retaining wall to the, to the trail itself?
Through the chair, if you want to ask or get to the next question to him, I'm taking a second. Get that in for me.
Okay, yeah, and my next question is going to be, what will happen to the trees between the wall and the trail? Especially when you have to excavate to put a foundation in that retaining wall?
Same, same person's going to answer that question.
Through the chair, she, one twenty-three, this is the sheet that reflects the layout. Specific to that. Thank you. Specific to that, we have a thirty, but it was seventeen feet from the edge of the building, seventeen point five feet of a thirty-foot wide drive aisle, approximately three feet. Any wall off a drive aisle, another, or two and a half feet. Then we have about six feet fence, which brings us to property line. Few feet off of that, so, and then the trail varies in location within the old rail right of way. Depending on where we are, it's another ten plus feet on the edge of the, the edge of the rail right of way.
No.
You say?
Various, but in the area of the retaining wall, the retaining wall to the trail, again, the trail and that location is justified kind of to the project side, but it's approximately twenty-seven odd feet.
And just, uh, just my personal opinion about the condition of the rail trail. It would be nice if all the businesses put up improved along the rail trail. Think everybody here can agree with that?
Yeah.
And I, I was more concerned about trees on rail trail.
So in the plans, there is a landscaping plan component on all of that.
That is correct. Also, we looked at that closely recently and updated one of our notes to, to basically address any sort of clearing that needs to happen, specific to the edge of the rail trail. We want to leave mature vegetation where we can, but we're certainly committed to supplementing as necessary along that entire.
All right, so you would potentially add some trees in there because once you dig the foundation for that retaining wall, you're going to be
Absolutely, yeah.
Five feet further out.
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you. Another comment about the theoretical tax increase that we would see from that development. I've done some research, looking at a comparison between ASM, that building, ASM being across the street, and Catamunde. Catamunde is about two and a half times larger, has a forty percent greater footprint. Their tax rate is, or the taxes they pay is about twenty, about, the, the value of their building is about twenty-one million. This building, if you were to look at other land use code four hundred warehouses in the area on Industrial Drive and on Shaker, I think what you find is that the valuation of the buildings are about twenty-five dollars per square foot, which would make this development worth about ten million dollars. If you were to look at the ten million dollars and how that would impact the average single home in town, which has a value of three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, that would equate to about six dollars and twenty-five cents per quarter on the tax bill. Now, anybody can go back and look at these things, but the tax benefit is not as great as what people think it is, and I would suggest that people do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold up, one ten Smith. Just wanted to say one thing. I will never sell out for safety. Safety above all. So whatever the taxes are, whatever the benefit is, I can't give up on safety.
On Burger, eleven Broadland Circle, excuse me. I just wanted to respond to the gentleman who, who talked about the benefits to the town. I don't necessarily disagree with you. Make it clear, we at the Fields are not trying to block development of that property. Love to see that property developed. We are just as bold, except we are concerned about safety. And one fatality would way override any benefit the town receives. Please don't think that we're trying to block it. We'd love to work with the developers. They tell us they have no, no tenants, but this is what they want. Well, it doesn't sound safe, particularly if you look at the worst case scenario. So that's, that's what we are, but we'd love to see something.
My name is Ruth Ohean, twenty-three Fields Drive. I just moved to the Fields. My major concern, one of my major concern is, is the increase, enormous increase in air pollution. And how will that be mitigated? Has anybody addressed that issue? I hope they have. And the deteriorating air quality that will ensue from so much traffic? And what about the increase in noise as well? So that's, that's very important to me, and has it been addressed? I, I, it has. And how will this?
So that is something that this board can place conditions on the development. And the prior project, we spent a considerable amount of time addressing that issue. And I would imagine that we're also going to do that at the continued hearing, where we will do our very best to put conditions to mitigate those type of things. So.
And the noise level as well?
We will do our very best. So, you know, just, you know, our, our other thought here, and we have said over and over and over and over again, we don't make decisions on whether the, whether someone is going to sue the town or not. We don't do that. We try to make decisions on what is in the best interest of the town, development-wise. So, you know, we, we do that. We are laypeople. We rely on town experts. And, you know, there are individuals who have degrees in public health and other things. And they believe that it is a detriment to, you know, the quality of life and to them personally. There are other avenues that they can pursue, like through the Board of Health and, you know, those type of entities. But I just want everyone to know, we do not vote on whether, you know, we, the developer's going to sue us. It, it doesn't bother us when we make decisions. We've been, I personally have been on this board eight years. I've been sued seven times. And I just want to make a valid point for anyone who's thinking, well, we're going to sue you if you vote for this. You don't sue Russell Denver individually, or Bill Fonseca individually. You sue us as members of the Town of East Long Meadow Planning Board. So, you know, that, that's who you do. You end up suing the town. The town ends up defending our decision, our vote, one way or the other. And the town can spend a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, I mean, whatever they feel is appropriate. So I just want to get that out, out on the table on who, who indeed you are suing. Because someone did come up to me in Big Y last week and say, if you vote for this, I'm going to sue you. And I go, oh, have at it. Feel free to do it. You know, be my guest. It won't be the first, and you won't be the last. So. But yes, we will try to do our very best.
Quality of life is very, very important. Yep.
I, Paris Oxner, forty Fields Drive. I just have a question. What is the difference from this proposal from the last proposal?
I am glad you asked. I wish Mary Hurley were here this evening. So the last project, and let's kind of do a quick recap for everybody in the audience. The last project that we're not acting on, because it's a different project, was five hundred and sixty-five thousand square feet, one building. And every single speaker came up and said, it's Amazon, it's Amazon, it's Amazon, it's Amazon. And it was never Amazon, period. This project is four separate buildings totaling four hundred and sixty-five thousand square feet. With math majors, and I'm not good at math, that's about a seventeen and a half percent decrease in the amount of square footage. That's a lot. If you're making a thousand dollars a week on pay, and someone only pays you eight hundred and twenty-five dollars instead of a thousand, that's the difference between seventeen and a half percent. So is Amazon going to move into one of the buildings that has ninety thousand square feet? No. Look at the other Amazon projects in our region. You go down to Bradley Airport, there's about a two and a half million square feet building as you're going down that roadway. There's a Amazon building up by Hoyoke Mall that's well over a million square feet. So if anyone is out there saying it's Amazon, 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 think again.
Yeah, but couldn't they still utilize those four buildings the same way and not be Amazon? So we went through this whole thing with all the trucks. Nothing has really changed. You know, I just, I'm not.
Is it, is it, it's difficult for this board and difficult for all of you to not know exactly who the tenant is?
But the potential is the same.
Here's the potential.
Are different buildings.
The potential is right behind you. Allowable uses. There they are. Allowable uses with a special permit. There they are. What had not go in there? Period. And to go way back. So I think Pete and Cassie and I were on the planning board way back when. There was a proposal that this board approved to put in a special overlay district, which would have allowed, allowed housing to go on there. We went back and forth with the developer for over a year, came up with a plan. They went to the town council. They, they changed it considerably, but still was the ability to put housing. Covid comes, they don't want to do housing. That's their right. They own the property. So if it's one of those uses, and we have to look at things like traffic and sewer and, you know, those, those type of things, you know, it's, it's hard. It's hard not knowing who it is, but they're under absolutely no obligation whatsoever to tell us who the tenant is going to be. And have we done that in other locations in town? Yes, we have. We put up proposed medical buildings. Didn't know who was going to go in there, but it had to be a medical use. They're telling you it's going to be a warehouse use. It's allowed as a matter of right.
So you really have to think of the, the most that they would use it?
So we have to try to think, we have to try to think, what can this board do to mitigate issues associated with potential uses on that site?
Right.
Or say no.
That's why with traffic, you have to think that they're going to utilize all four and, you know.
I, I am sure the developer wants to utilize all four. They want to get paid. I'm sure they do.
So that's why you have to think of the traffic with all those units.
And, and the last time there was a condition, and please correct me if I'm incorrect, but we were going to require them to come back to this planning board whenever they were going to put in a new tenant, so we could relook at all these issues.
Right.
And that may be one condition that we put on next time. The, the woman who talked about air pollution, one of the conditions that we had put on last time was, you know, doing something, and Mr. Bolduc says it doesn't work, but, you know, we can disagree. But it's, it's our ability to do something like that to try to mitigate.
I'm saying is, we still had the same issue with the trucks the last time, and it's the same thing.
So would you, would you think, and regardless of Mr. Pill now using a different phrase for the type of warehouse that it's going to be? Okay. Would you use the general assumption that if you reduce the amount of square footage, there's potentially less vehicles that will use that site? Not a guarantee, but potentially. So. But I'm not going to debate it. I, yeah, we can't debate it.
I can.
Well, I tried to answer your question.
Thanks.
Yeah. So we're, sir, standing in back, are, are you going to, okay. So are we, we're going to continue it? So there are some takeaways that both Mr. Pill, Mr. Mishoud, the petitioner, would you please address with our planning director so that we can get everything together? I, I would suggest that we vote to continue to, we can't do our next meeting. So it would be the first Tuesday in November, which I believe is November fourth.
Yes, but you also have Pioneer Valley coming to that meeting as well. So you also. So you've also pushed them off for two months in a row. Um, so I don't know.
So let's do, let's try to do November fourth at six thirty. Six thirty. And uh, please, there, there obviously have been upgraded materials, updated materials. Go on to the town website, insert, you know, all of that material is there. Um, it's there for all of you to be able to review it and see it and try to understand it. So I thoroughly encourage you to do that.
And folks who wanna find that information, just go onto the Town of East Long Meadow webpage, eastlongmeadowma.gov and look for the planning board specific page. Look for it, it says active case files, click on that, it'll take you to all the active permits for the planning department, planning board, zoning board, everybody. And if folks have trouble finding that, you can always reach out to my office. My name is Rob Wachilla, Director of Planning, Planning Community Development. You stop by, give us a call, we'll be willing to help you out.
So the first Tuesday in November is November fourth?
Correct.
Okay. And we will try to do our very best to not get kicked out by the dancing group. And have it back at the senior center, but certainly go on, on the site to make sure that we're.
I would say, I am afraid to be here for now, uh, but we will definitely post the location a week before the meeting on the town website, folks, so nobody gets lost. They, uh, Mr. Beck has his hand up.
Especially the chair, just wanted to make sure that wasn't.
I don't think we have a.
We don't have any state elections.
So it impacts other states, but not.
Not ours.
Yes.
Yeah. Right. So, um, do I have a motion to continue the public hearing until Tuesday, November fourth at six thirty?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, say nay, hearing none, then I don't pass this. Thank you all. Have a vote to bring it back into open session.
Move.
Oh, second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Just conferred a good reference. I was broken by Cassie and seconded by Pete for the minutes. Thank you.
Very easy, easy.
Yeah, right to that. That's done. Yeah.
Okay, let's get this over with.
Okay.
Okay, spotlight, alright. Uh, let's see. Quickly, I have to get on to. Um, I put your next five meeting dates to guess the end of the year. We still have to approve the meeting dates for twenty twenty-six. So if you guys wanna get these down in your calendar, as of right now, you do have two public hearings coming on the twenty-first listed right there. The first is for a combined site plan review special permit for the altering and enlarging of a non-conforming structure. Adding additional fifteen hundred square feet to a commercial building.
That's what's on my list.
Proposing a warehouse at Shaker Road, one named Shaker Road. And the other public hearing on the twenty-first is for site plan review. To construct a fifty-seven hundred square foot commercial office building at ninety-five Shaker Road. That, that project, um, as I mentioned, Ken Komiya from Pioneer Valley is gonna be attending the first part of the meeting on November fourth to discuss the housing production plan with the board.
Great.
Um, so ongoing projects, so we are still working on the mixed use bylaw. We do have a final draft. They'll be coming to the town council very shortly. Uh, we're still trying to decide which meeting to bring that to them. Uh, and then the traffic and pedestrian sort of report, I've actually started working on this after pushing off for three months. Uh, just wanna quick blurb, so the Jeff spec thing did happen on September thirtieth. Uh, Mr. Chair said you made the results of that.
I thought it was very fascinating.
He did a really good job. He's actually given us that liberal ball that he presented. Use for our rotary feasibility study when we go out and advertise for that. There it is. There you go. Uh, but other than that, that's all I have. Mr. Chair, thank you for your time.
Right. Any other business in front of us? Hearing none, motion to adjourn?
One more, one second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.